Just a couple of quick things here. I just want to thank the council for the nice plant that was sent for my mother's funeral over the weekend. It was appreciated. And also, I just want to say thank you to the anonymous passerby that on Saturday afternoon noticed sparks and flames coming out of the downspout of the Historical Society's building. There was a heat tape that had shorted out and was on fire. Called the fire department. Mayor, I want to thank our fire department for quickly responding as well and taking care of that. So, thank you. That's all I have. Anything from the city manager?
Two quick items. The Levy Park Committee will be bringing forward their recommendations to the council on April 6th, and staff will be bringing forward information on the Bamanic Fields at the April 20th council meeting. So, both of those items will be coming up. That's all. Thank you.
Okay. Roll call?
Mayor Peterson.
Here.
Councilman Thurly.
Here.
Craig.
Here.
Alexander. Ayden.
Here.
Borzakowski.
Here.
Double.
Here.
Under the required public hearings, item 2.1 is an appeal of a decision of the Board of Adjustment by Kirk and Mary Andrich.
Okay, the Andriches have appealed the decision and have asked that the council consider it. And the process as it's going to be is I'll open the public hearing now and declare the public hearing open. And the process after that will be the appellants will...appellants, I'm sorry. Kirk and Mary Andrich will have the opportunity to be heard by the city council and to show why the order of the Board of Adjustment should be overruled or amended. You'll have up to 20 minutes for that. And then there'll be questions from the council, members to the appellant, and an opportunity after that for other interested people to speak as well, up to two minutes per person. The city staff and the Board of Adjustment will then have a presentation on the variance that can last up to 10 minutes. And there'll be then questions by the city council and members of the city staff. Following that, I'll close the public hearing. And then legal counsel has a presentation on the appeal process. The council will deliberate. And they have several options that they could follow at that point. So, if you wish, go ahead and introduce yourself and state your address and welcome to the city council.
Hi, I'm Burton Andrich, son of Kirk and Mary Andrich. We represent him here. He also here with my wife, Elise Andrich. My address is 319 Olmsted, here in Winona. We are appealing the decision made by the Board of Adjustments to deny us the parking variance to make our home a rental property. Some of the concerns they had when we first came to them were the parking situation. We have the regular driveway, stacked parking, which most rental properties require side-by-side parking. But we only have two bedrooms, so per, we only require one parking spot per bedroom. And since we live there right now, we only have, we have two cars, so it wouldn't be much of an issue. Our plan would not be to rent out the property right away. To wait quite a while. We wish to live there for quite, again, quite a while, many years, having kids, raising a family, which also, since there aren't that many rental properties on the block or the surrounding area, we do intend to keep it a family area, not renting out to college students if possible. Also, another concern was the parking on the street and the surrounding area, since we are close to Madison Elementary. But upon watching for the past few weeks, we've noticed the congestion isn't very great. It's only between the hours of 7:00 and 8:00 in the morning and then 2:00 and 3:00 in the evening, when parents come to drop off their kids and then pick them up. Other than that, it's a fairly empty street. And for the potential of cars, should we rent it out and then more people come to live there, like two or three, and more cars are...we...we...we will like to have children in the future, so when they become of age, they will have cars as well. So, going from two to three, even more on the street. And that was my answer right now.
Okay. Questions from council members? I guess not. I guess you can sit down, and I'll ask if there's anybody else in the audience that wishes to speak. Anybody else wish to speak? Anybody else? And I'll turn it over to the city staff and their presentation.
It's not much of a presentation, but I'm Chris Sanchez, chairman of the Board of Adjustments. And so, I felt to come and pitch a little bit why we made the decision what we made. And so, basically, after listening to Mr. and Mrs. Andrich, the Board of Adjustments found no substantial reason to vary from the city code for parking requirement that requires two parking spaces for one rental dwelling unit. Then, the Andriches' main reason for wanting the variance and rental was to have the opportunity to rent out the property after their family outgrows it. The board determined that if the variance were granted, it would not be in harmony with the purpose and intent of the ordinance, because it does not meet the relevant provisions of the 30% rule for parking. The board also decided the variance was not in accordance to the comprehensive plan because of the additional parking needed. So, as the board decided that the reason stated that they wanted the variance for was not enough to justify varying from the rule for the parking conditions for a rental. So, any questions from the council?
Questions from Mr. Sanchez from the council. I guess not.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'll close the public hearing and ask if legal counsel has anything to say.
Briefly, Mr. Mayor, and council, in your packet, obviously, and then council servants and others in this process at this point, there are proposed alternative findings, conclusions, and order in your packet. They present three options for the council to consider. One is to affirm the decision of the Board of Adjustment, adopting the board's findings on the six statutory...statutory required criteria. Those are contained in exhibit D to the draft findings. The other would be to affirm the decision of the board denying the variance, but modifying those six criteria. And then the last option would be to overrule the decision of the Board of Adjustment to deny the variance, effectively, of course, granting the variance. If that is the direction that the council wants to go, staff would request that you do a motion to direct that back to staff to come back in a subsequent meeting with proposed findings.
Okay. Thank you. Deliberations? I'll move to affirm the order of the Board of Adjustment.
I would second that.
Motion by Paul, seconded by Pam. Any further discussion? George?
I think just after hearing the testimony, I don't feel at this time that there is enough reason to grant this variance at this particular time.
Okay. Jerry?
Mr. and Mrs. Andrich, my property is very similar to yours. I don't live too far from you, and I've got a long driveway. We have a few cars stacked. We could put quite a few cars on it, but they're all stacked and no room to expand it. There was a time that I looked into making our property a rental for similar situations, when we either outaged it, we're a lot older than you, or just to protect it in the event that you want to, you know, get it before the 30%. One of the first things I found out, that there was no way I could get around the parking issue, and it was just a dead deal. It's unfortunate for you, however, that's one of the main things that comes up in Winona's, because as you said, you have a traditional driveway, where it works for families. It's not, it doesn't work for rentals. And if we granted you the variance, we'd be having to grant so many variances. And every story is personal, and they're compelling. But we have to look at the big picture, so I hope you understand.
Well, I too have a very similar driveway to Jerry. I'm the appellant here. I'm not looking at turning my property into a rental property, but I do worry about the precedent that this would set and all the other properties that are so similar to all of our property. For that reason, I'm not going to support it. Anybody else? Hearing none, we'll vote on the motion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Kerry's.
Next is item 2.2. It's the Red Top Mobile Home Park Closure.
Second there. All right. I will declare the public hearing open and ask if there's anybody that wishes to speak. Start with Carlos.
Evening, Mayor and Council. Item number 2.2 is the Red Top Mobile Home Park Closure. In accordance with state statute, closure of a mobile home park requires a city council public hearing. At the public hearing tonight, council is required to do two things. First of all, review the closure statement and any impact the closure may have on displaced residents or the park owner. And second, appoint a neutral third party to help resolve any disputes related to the relocation trust fund. The only required action for this item tonight is for council to designate that third party. And staff has identified the Winona HRA as a potential entity that could serve that role. So, should council concur tonight, a motion to appoint the Winona HRA as the neutral third party in the Red Top Mobile Home Park Closure would be in order.
Okay, thank you, Carlos. Is there anybody else here that wishes to speak? Anybody wish to speak to the Red Top Trailer Court? Anybody else wish to speak? Last chance. All right, I'll declare the public hearing closed and ask for council direction.
I would concur a motion to appoint Winona HRA as a neutral party in the Red Top Mobile Home Park Closure process.
I'll second that. Okay, motion by George, seconded by Al. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Kerry's.
Under the petition's request and communications, item 3.1, reappointments to the building and fire code, Board of Appeals, Brian Builo, James Carlson, Mike Hansen, Dave Sharmer, and Owen Warnake.
Move to approve those appointments?
Second.
Motion by George, seconded by Jerry. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Kerry's.
Item 3.2 is a license agreement for the Winona artisan market.
Move to approve the agreement?
Second that.
Motion by George, seconded by Pam. Any discussion? No? Okay, we'll vote. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Kerry's.
Item 3.3 is a request by the Winona Fire Department Union to host a 5K run at East Lake Winona on April 18th.
Move to approve.
Second. Motion by Jerry, seconded by Paul. Any discussion? George?
Just a question. I see there's some fire members here. What if a person just wants to walk? Okay.
Walking's encouraged.
What if a person wants to walk really slow?
But just be back by the time the streets are open? Any further discussion?
What?
The park closes at 10.
Yeah, the park closes at 10. All right, we'll vote. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Kerry's.
Item 3.4 is a request for use of Levy Park by the Winona County Wellness Committee, Wednesday, April 15th.
Move to approve that request?
Second.
Motion by Al, seconded by George. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Kerry's.
Item 3.5 is a request to close Lake Park Drive by Wincraft for their picnic on Saturday, July 18th.
Move to approve that request?
Second. Motion by George, seconded by Paul. Any discussion?
I would like to know, is this a traditional use of this area, or has this celebration now been moved to the...to this, to the road? I don't recall that it was there last year, but I would like to know.
Do you know?
I believe it's been there for several years.
Several years, okay.
George?
Well, I think along with RTP and other companies as well, too, it has been there.
Okay. Any other comments? Hearing none, we'll vote. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Kerry's.
Item 3.6 is a request for 5K, 10K by Bluff Humanosori for Saturday, May 16th.
Move to approve that request?
Second that.
Motion by George, seconded by Pam. Any discussion? George?
I know they're tiring us out tonight with all these walks and runs, so...
I think they're trying to tell us something, George.
Any other comments? Hearing none, we'll vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Kerry's.
Item 3.7 is a request for St. Mary's University Row Ride Run Event on Saturday, April 25th.
I would move to approve that request pending non-dat approval of the traffic crossing 61.
Yes, I would second that.
Okay, motion by Al, seconded by Pam. Any other discussion? George is getting tired over there, so we better hurry and vote. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Kerry's.
Item 3.8 is a request for street closure for Earth Day. This is 8th Street from Maine to Johnson on April 18th.
I would move to approve that street closure.
Second.
Motion by Pam, seconded by George. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Kerry's.
Item 3.9 is a request for Gabor Park Event on July 11th. This is an outdoor movie hosted by Winona Park Rec and the Winona Chiefs Baseball Team.
I would move to approve that request.
Second. Motion by George, seconded by Paul. Any discussion? Anybody know the name of the movie?
Sandlot.
Sandlot? Oh, that's a good movie.
Oh, okay, cool.
Hope for good weather. All right, any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Kerry's.
Item 3.10 is Winona Flood Control System Status.
Hey, Mr. Nelson?
Mayor and Council, thank you for this opportunity to give you this information tonight. This does not take any action. It is solely for just providing information. Dealing with flood control system, I have three issues I want to talk about just briefly tonight. And one is, the big one, is that the levy system, the whole system, at some point will need to be accredited or certified, take your choice of the terminology. What that...that's a result of disasters that's happened throughout the country over the last few years. The Corps has come back and said, let's make sure that all the design is reviewed, all of the maintenance reviewed, everything to do with the system is reviewed. And that's what's going to be required for the city of Winona. We haven't got the official notice that it's going to have to be done yet, but they told me several times that that's coming. What, in the memo, I talk about what's going to make it occur is the floodplain maps are currently under review, are going to be reissued. When they're reissued, they'll come out with a provisionally accredited levy designation for the levy system. At that point, we'll start the window for us, start the clock for us. We'll have two years to go through the accreditation process. And the accreditation is for the 100-year flood. Unfortunately, the Mississippi River portion of the flood control system is designed for the 280, 285-year event. So, it's, we have some, you know, that's to our credit. That's going to help us in the whole process. But having said that, we have a whole list of maintenance items that we have to go through as well. So, that's the first one, is the accreditation process. The second one, which ties to that, is dealing with levy park changes. If there are some changes that are recommended from the council, it would make sense to tie any design or any investigation on that with that accreditation process, get some cost savings. We'll proceed with the, getting proposals for the accreditation, and then have these other things come in as change orders. But they'll be in there analyzing the walls, analyzing the drainage system anyway. So, there should be some real savings in doing that. And I laid out a process of with having the consultants do a preliminary design, preliminary estimate, and then taking that to the Corps, and then having the Corps review that, rather than going through a full design. Bring them, bring it to them, saying with initial thoughts of, yes, it will work, and this is why it will work. And then the Corps comes back to us with a recommendation. Then you go through a full design on that portion. The third thing is what we call a SWIF. Every year, the whole levy system is reviewed, and we get back a list of items that we have to address, or we have to do something with. There's a number of those items, like I listed in here, include animal burrows, easement encroachments, unwanted vegetation growth, and testing and pumping. Those are things that show up all the time, and we continually address those. We will, the Corps, when the levy system is designated as acceptable, we're within a program called the rehabilitation program. Should the Corps ever, the levy ever break, the Corps, the federal government will come and help us rebuild that. If we don't have the whole system up to speed and acceptable rating, then we're not in that program anymore. What they've done now is we have this list of items that have to be addressed, and we will go into the SWIF program, which again, takes two years to address all those. So, these things are all going to happen at the same time, this two-year process, but they'll address all those issues. They've listed the ones that are the priority items. One is documenting all the pipes and the culverts, and we're going to televise them as well. Addressing all the encroachments, there's a number of fire pits and fences, trees, anything like that, which has gotten on the levy or gotten in within the easement of the levy. We have to address those, either to justify that they were approved, or that they're not going to cause a problem, or remove them. Those will all be addressed. Evaluate the effectiveness of the toad raiding system, repair the animal burrows. That's an ongoing issue. We always get animals which are digging into the levy. We have to fill those holes and remove the animals to the best we can. Part of that is putting together our maintenance program to make sure that we stay on top of that. That one, in my book, is one of the most serious of the issues that we have to stay on top of, because they have to dig holes in sand levees. Then investigate the condition of the wiring in the pumping operations, and then locate and monitor all the original phasometers, which is what, which measures the pressure of the water on the dry side of the levy. Some of those, we have not been able to locate, and we need to find those or reestablish them. And the sixth one is develop an emergency preparedness plan that's specific to the flood event. We have emergency plans in place, but not that, you know, what happens if the levy breaks? What do we do? We have to have something along that line. So, we'll go with that. There's no, there are no issues that are imminent. There are no real danger issues. The levy system works very well. These are all maintenance issues, and staff is in the process of addressing them as quickly as we can. But some of those are complex, especially getting into encroachments. It's involving properties that have been there for a long time, and it's a complex issue. So, it'll take some time. Fortunately, we have two years to address that through the SWIF process. Any questions to all of that?
Keith, I have a question about encroachment. Say there is an issue with a private party encroaching on a levy. What powers does the city have to have that corrected?
There's three ways that we would look at it. First, we would see, is there approval for it being there, the encroachment? And then, two is, is the encroachment an issue? If we, if we don't think it's an issue, then we have to prove it's not. Like, if the encroachment might hinder maintenance, then can we say, is there another way to maintain it? Or is the encroachment causing problems where we can't give the proper flood prediction? Then we either have to address it or remove it. And yes, we have, it is the city's easement for the whole flood control system. We have the legal right to have that moved.
Are we being proactive in cases where we believe that they're interfering with maintenance, or there are fire pits on top of the levy? I don't know, building patios, I don't know. I'm not sure what some of these are, but, I mean, are we dealing with them?
Yeah, it's a mixed bag. They've occurred for over many years. You know, in the industrial area, has been some issues. Some of the most recent ones are at Prairie Island, where we have, you know, patios and fire pits and things. Yes, we believe we've stopped them, but a lot of them have not been taken away yet. None of them are, in my mind, again, are issues that would stop us from building up the top of the levy if we had to, or driving through maintenance. But a lot of those may have to go, that are in the way. There's a number of fences that are across the way. Again, if we have an issue, an emergency, we're going to go through that fence. But the Corps doesn't want us to have to go through and tear it out of there. We want it gone in the first place, or have a gate or something along that line. So, yes, we're being very proactive with it. We have a lot of ground to catch up on it as well.
Any other questions for Keith? Guess not, thank you.
On to the next item. 3.11 is a request for utility fee reduction for 801 Gilmore Avenue. Kirk Halene.
Mr. Halene?
Hi.
Welcome.
My name's Kirk Halene, 801 Gilmore Avenue. I had a faulty water softener I didn't realize had been running forever. And by the time I received notice by the city that I had a problem, it was like a month, month and a half after, I guess it went bad. And I got an exorbitantly large utility bill that's way larger than normal. I was hoping that they'll get some assistance or set a payment plan or something.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Halene? Mr. Halene, has the water softener question?
I got that water softener through Water Systems Company, at least through them.
Okay. Did, well, I mean, obviously, has it been repaired, is my question?
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
Has it been repaired?
Yes, it has.
So, it no longer is?
It's no longer running continually.
Okay. Okay, any other questions? Thank you. Your motion? Guess not. Mayor? Yes.
Is it possible, can he set up a payment plan?
We always encourage them to talk to the finance department and work through that. I guess if the council directed to waive the, this late fees still would accumulate by the ordinance, but if the council wanted the late fees waived, the finance department could do that. Otherwise, they would still go into effect at this point.
So, we could do, we could relieve the late fees and direct the finance department to set up a finance plan for the gentleman?
And set a timeframe or something, yes.
Right. I usually vote against giving, reducing it, but I would certainly be in favor of doing something with late fees and maybe a payment plan for the gentleman.
So moved.
Second. Do you want to put a time limit on that, though?
Yeah. I have no idea. I'm open to suggestions for somebody a year.
Okay.
One year from the time they come to an agreement.
Do you accept that as part of your motion? Okay, we have a motion by Jerry and seconded by Paul. Any further discussion? George?
Just so he knows to contact Mary.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments? All right, we'll vote. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Kerry's.
Item 3.12 is Bryce Lumen requests for vacation of a portion of the alley adjacent to 6, excuse me, 561 Zombro Street.
Mr. Lumen here? Would you like to step up to the podium and just say a few words? Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. My name is Bryce Lumen. I own property at 561 Zombro Street, Winona. There's an alley outside my property. When I purchased the property back in 2008, part of the house encroached approximately 6 feet into the alley. It's my understanding this encroachment existed for 40 years or more. The fire owner of the property got a license agreement, a license agreement in 1995 allowing this encroachment. That license continued indefinitely and could be terminated only upon destruction, demolition, or removal of the house when the property owner has failed to comply with the terms of the agreement. or removal of the house when the property owner has failed to comply with the terms of the agreement. This allowed the encroachment to continue when the property was sold. After I bought the property, I wanted to approve it and the appearance of the neighborhood by installing a sidewalk and patio in the alley area. If you remember, in May of last year, I approached you guys about doing so. You approved it. However, unannounced to me, the new license agreement superseded the 1995 one and it included a provision that the city can terminate this license agreement on 90 days' notice. Currently, I have a purchase agreement to sell the property, but the buyer's lender said they cannot finance the property because the city can terminate the license and require removing the sidewalk patio in addition to the house. I have been told that no lender will finance the property under these circumstances. As a result, I cannot sell my property. The alley next to my property has not been open or used for many years if ever. Alley basically dead ends in the back of my house. There is no curb cut on the Zombrel Street. There are trees growing in the middle of the alley, one very large one that I would guess is 40 or 50 years old.
Could I answer that?
Actually, can we interrupt you for just a minute and let Mr. Nelson?
I apologize, I'm not here to argue, but tonight's is just to set up a public hearing so we'd have this whole discussion on April 6th.
Oh, okay.
So tonight is just, if the council wants to proceed with having a public hearing, we just.
Okay.
If I can at least finish my case.
Could you just quickly, really quickly wrap it up? You'll have your chance.
All that I am asking for is a partial vacation of the part of the alley that's really not part of the alley because it has not been in use for ever at all, as far as I know.
Okay, well, we'll, we'll see you back here on April 6th if the council approves that.
Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. That's my fault, I didn't catch that.
I would move to approve to set the hearing date for Monday, April 6th.
Second.
Seconded by George, seconded by Pam. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Carrie's.
Under New Business, item 5.1 is the Fine Arts Recommendation for Blue Heron Funds.
I would move to approve the attached resolution approving the funds.
I would second that.
Motion by George, seconded by Pam. I know Deb Ward is here to answer any questions if you have them. Do you have any other questions or comments from council members?
Just have one comment. It's definitely a wide range of endeavors that the Fine Arts Commission is entertaining, so I appreciate that.
I have a question for Deb. The Fine Arts Commission, are they planning any future fundraisers like the Blue Heron Project? Maybe come up to the podium if you would.
We've had that conversation several times. The issue is that all of us that are on the Fine Arts Commission are all employed and we have day jobs and it's very difficult for us to find enough time and energy to put a fundraising event together. So up until this point, we haven't really come up with something that we feel that we can do. We hate to see the granting process disappear, which unfortunately, probably within the next year, maybe two years, excuse me, that's going to happen because now we're getting down to not having very much money left at all, so.
Can you remind us how much money was raised by that project?
$45,000. And we have granted that money out each year since we received it. So now we're down to the final $7,000, but with tonight's grants, that will take it down to about $3,500.
Thank you. Any other questions before we vote? Hearing none, we'll vote. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Carrie's.
Item 5.2 is the Asme 2015 Contract.
Motion approved. Motion by Paul.
Second.
Seconded by Jerry. Any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Carrie's.
Item 5.3 is the Canadian Pacific Railway Resolution.
I would move to approve the resolution.
Second.
Motion by George, seconded by Paul. Any comments?
Yeah, just simply with this, as we asked the public, or Mayor asked the public to, any delays that they're involved in to call and, you know, however they want to get word to the railroad. And from what I understand, even from Greg Taylor here, I believe it was last meeting, how there's been a lot of responses to this. This is just simply saying that we support those people's requests and move it forward with the railroad to get, you know, discussion going on the matter.
And people are calling, apparently, because I did hear back from both, from Herb Jones, who's a Vice President of, I'm looking for his address or his title here, but he encourages people to continue to call in with specific information about the location, the times, engine number, if it's safe to get that and let them know. And I do believe sometime in the near future, there will be a meeting with representatives from the CP Railroad. And if possible, George, I'd like you to be a part of that meeting when the time comes, so.
Yes, I would like to.
And some city staff, too. All right. Anybody else that may wish to participate is welcome as well. So we have a motion in a second, I believe. Any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Carrie's.
Item 5.4 is the dock construction at Levy Park.
Well, we've, having our packet here, several bids for constructing 120-foot dock structure down in the east end of Levy Park. Pilings are there and staff has secured some bids that would accommodate a new boat operation down there, which would, I think, generate a lot of visitors to the Levy Park area and entertain and help keep visitors to Winona, so I think having a dock down there would be a great thing.
Move to approve the $25,000 towards the Levy Dock Construction.
Second.
Who are we voting for, 25,000? The support authority's already, oh, the committee's recommending. Is that probably mine in our motion?
There comes Melissa. Yeah, yeah, second.
It is, okay, sorry. All right. So we have a motion in a second. Motion by Jerry and seconded by George, or?
Yes.
Okay. Further discussion?
Yeah, we've had three bids here. Who's going to be the final arbiter, make the choice here on these bids we have?
Yes, Mayor and Members of Council, there are three quotes that are before you this evening for three different types of docks. And the low quote is for a treated wood and steel dock for $36,550. I will note that none of the quotes include the concrete work that's necessary for part of the dock project, so we still do anticipate that it could be between $45,000 and $50,000. So we were looking for the $25,000 contribution from the city. It was unanimously approved by the Port Authority at their last meeting and so we would recommend the low quote.
Which is a Winona company.
It's a local company.
Left the motion, the motion was for $25,000 with, for the low bidder of Winona Welding and Sandblasting.
Okay.
I'm fine with that, so.
All right. Further discussion? George?
Also, Al and I serve on the Port Authority and we also allocated $25,000 towards this project as well, so.
And just a comment, too, that the dock is not only for the proposed excursion boat, but it's also for individual pleasure boaters. There will be enough room on that dock for individual boaters to take advantage of our city and community in addition to those who would like to ride on the Mississippi using the new boat.
And my understanding is it leaves plenty of room for the American Queen or the Viking Cruise Dock.
Yeah, Viking Explorer, if they decide to stop here, yeah.
Convenient to an underutilized parking lot. Yeah, very good. All right, anything else? Hearing none, we'll vote. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Carrie's.
Item 5.5 is the license agreement with the Mississippi Explorer of Winona for Levy Park Boat Dock.
Move to approve the agreement.
I'll second.
Go ahead, Al.
Okay, thank you.
Motion by George, seconded by Al. Discussion?
Obviously, we couldn't have this without the others, so.
Right.
I look forward to the success of this endeavor.
I do, and I'm sure it will be. All right, any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion, Carrie's.
Item 7.1 is council concerns.
I'll start with George.
Thank you. This coming Wednesday, which is March 18th, I will be hosting a Neighborhood Watch Meeting, Fourth Ward Neighborhood Watch Meeting at 6:30 PM in the front room of the Winona Athletic Club. That's this Wednesday, 6:30, Front Room, Winona Athletic Club. I would like to send out anniversary greetings to a wonderful Fourth Ward couple. Harold and Karen Erickson are celebrating 50 years. Good fortune to them in the future. I would like to compliment the Winona Senior High Girls Basketball Team on a very successful basketball season and representing our city well. And to our neighbors in Southeast Minnesota, to the Rushford Boys Basketball Team, congratulations to them on winning the state championship. And they represented Southeast Minnesota very, very well, plus their city of Rushford. And Peterson, thank you.
Hey, Pam?
I would like to remind everyone that this weekend, this next coming weekend, is the Friends of the Winona Public Library Annual Book Sale. This will be on Friday and Saturday. It's going to be at the Senior Center, otherwise known as the Friendship Center. And all proceeds from this big book sale will go to support the, enrich the resources of the library. So come on down.
Paul?
I'd just like to extend our sympathies and good luck to the people on the Ohio River who are right now going through what we typically go through in this ring with massive floods. And also to just let the council know that there is a bill moving through the state legislature now to provide assistance for workforce housing, which is a substantial need in the area for people who have jobs, are and want to relocate to the communities but cannot find affordable housing. So there's a bill in the legislature right now to accomplish that.
Jerry?
Nothing, save me.
Al?
Just a reminder, you know, it's odd to say this, but I note that our weather conditions have been awfully dry and I would encourage people to not use any outside fires because the ground is very dry and the brush has not come up yet and we do have some real potential for some serious fires. So please use caution, if not, don't use it at all outside. Hold off until the conditions are a little more favorable, especially with the winds we've been having as well. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you.
Under the Consent Agenda, there are two items. The approval of minutes for March 2nd and the final adoption of an ordinance to establish handicap parking on Wabashaw Street.
Move to approve the Consent Agenda.
Second that.
Motion by Al, seconded by Pam. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Carrie's.
Mayor, I move we adjourn.
We have a motion and a second, I see. All those in favor of adjourned, say aye. Aye. Adjourned.
That was kind of sweet there, okay.
A few things to say.